Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 17, 2012 Meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Manukian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Friedman.
Mayor Protam Najarian.
Here. Councilmember Manukian, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Please join me in the salute to our nation's flag.
Ready? Begin.
(Inaudible) by the United States of America, Republic of Canada, One Nation Under God.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Yesterday, we marked a nationwide celebration of the legacy of Martin Luther King Jr., a giant in the civil rights movement who tore down racial barriers by nonviolent means and persistent pursuit of justice. He once wrote from a cold jail cell in Birmingham, Alabama, that, quote, "We must use time creatively in the knowledge that the time is always ripe to do what is right." Let us pray that as members of one community of shared goals and common interests, we make the most of our limited time in doing what is right for our city and our collective future. Help us work in the spirit of unity and equality for which the Reverend King worked so hard and sacrificed his life. Let us find inspiration in his words and deeds tonight and always. Amen.
May we have your report, please?
Agenda for the January 17, 2012 Regular Meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, January 12, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. I'm going to deviate from the regularly posted agenda and recess the regular meeting of the Glendale City Council and call to order the special meeting of the Glendale City Council of January 17, 2012. And for that special meeting, may we have the roll call?
Councilmembers Manukian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Friedman.
Mayor Protam Najarian.
Here. Much as you'd love, I think, to do a second invocation, Artie, we're going to skip over that and get right to the action item. It's not an action item, but the item number one on the agenda. I'm going to turn to our city manager, Mr. Ochoa.
Certainly. If we may, if I could just read the posting in compliance with the Brown Act, the agenda for the January 17, 2012 Special Meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Monday, January 16, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. And before you, just an update on Senate Bill 659 and related redevelopment litigation legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. And as we have Mr. Lanza Faim come to before the council to make an update and presentation on what's going on. The reason why we're having this special meeting is that the situation with respect to the future of redevelopment is changing rapidly. It's evolving day by day, and new information continues to come out of Sacramento. So that being the case, we want to make sure the city council has the very latest and greatest information with which to make suggestions, recommendations, and ultimately, policy. So that being said, we'll have Mr. Lanza Faim give a brief presentation about where we are now and then answer any questions for the council that you might have.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor Protam, members of the city council, it was just last week, we were before you with a report, a status report. The main thrust of our communication to you today is late last week Senator Padilla introduced SB 659. It is legislation that would postpone the implementation of AB 26, the law that dissolves redevelopment agencies, would postpone it from February 1st to April 15th. Again, that would give time for legislators and the redevelopment industry to work together to fashion a new redevelopment program, one that meets the needs of the state and local jurisdictions. In addition, we had reported last week that Senator Steinberg had introduced legislation, and in fact, we've seen a little bit of that language. That would six, that bill is 654. That would allow the Housing Authority to maintain fund balances, to keep those fund balances, and continue to do some affordable housing.
You mean the 20% set aside?
The 20% set aside. Under AB 26, that is, those funds that are in our balance, the balance that are in our funds, rather, is something we're supposed to send to the big trust fund. This legislation would allow us to keep that. I just wanted to pick out a few slides, Michael or Artie, if we could advance, just from last week, again, to remind of the impacts of unwinding the city's redevelopment program. These are the projects that are in jeopardy of not going forward. The Central Library Rehab and Reconfiguration, the Alex Theater Expansion, Central Avenue Improvements, among the biggest ticket items. I would note, under the Central Library, the Glendale, Friends of the Glendale Public Library adopted a resolution today supporting Senator Padilla's legislation. Next slide, please. Again, the housing program, if it stands as it is, these are the types of things that we would lose. No new development, all of our rental assistance programs for both life rap and vet rap would go away, first-time home buyers and rehabilitation.
And as you're seeing, the affordable housing elements of the redevelopment elimination start to hopefully unravel to a degree. I think that's an indication that what is happening in Sacramento is not what anyone intended. The AB 26 elimination casts a huge net, but there are still many, many things that are positive that redevelopment agencies do. And now, what I think you may end up starting to see is more of special legislation designed to peel away the things that weren't intended. And again, it makes for a very complex wind down of redevelopment.
These are some of the assets, again, that were transferred to the city in hopes that they may be protected under the legislation that was adopted and upheld by the Supreme Court. These properties may in fact be sold, have to be sold. They include the Alex Theater, the Green within the Americana brand, as well as the parking structure, the lot that the parking structure sits on, some properties that we own across from the Americana, and some properties we own in the exchange.
And this level of complexity helps point out that, again, even if you are not in favor of redevelopment, unwinding it in a four-month period or a four-week period is extraordinarily complex, if not impossible. If it's going to be done, then it needs to be done intelligently over a longer period of time, one, so agencies and communities can dispose of assets in a way that makes sense to the community, but also to make sure that there is an opportunity for a replacement for redevelopment. We are up the proverbial creek, and without redevelopment, we will be without that paddle. So the idea is to make sure that there is a commonsensical way to make the transition.
Next slide, please. This was the case study that we did on the Lenley Lofts Project. Again, this slide is if, pre-AB 26, if redevelopment was operating the way it had in the past, we noted $1.3 million to this community, $588,000 in fees, jobs created, the intangible benefits. We corrected this sales tax. We actually looked back and revised our estimate, the $26,000. But we have shown what the state of California would receive, $160,000 annual in sales tax if this project were to go forward. And the next slide, and I should, while we're here, $123,000, those are school development fees. The $75,000 is a statutory pass-through. That's what we pass through to the school district every year, we would, if we were to build this project. The next slide, please. This shows what would happen if we disposed of the property, with the value at approximately 1.7. Glendale would lose $1.4 million. The city would receive a portion of those sale proceeds, approximately $300,000. The county and the state are the big winners on this. We've shown the Glendale Unified School District as zero. And if you go to the next slide for me, actually, this just shows the two together in comparison. We've shown a zero for the school district for this reason. There is no new net money. Whatever the school district would receive, it would be considered property tax and alleviate the state from backfilling their guarantee of prop 98 funds to schools. Next slide, please, Artie. So here we're showing you pre-26. That property tax is really tax increment. We have some tax sharing, that was that $76,000. Then whatever's left, the state must backfill for a minimum or a guaranteed amount. Under the post-26, whatever we sell off would become property tax, wouldn't go to raise the amount going to schools or to colleges, community colleges. It would merely alleviate the backfill at the state. So for that reason, we listed the gain in the state column on those charts. And then the last slide here. This is the structure that we showed you last time. On the left-hand side, it's really the community, Glendale, that is driving the actions of the redevelopment agency and the Housing Authority. They elected you to represent them and implement their programs. On the right-hand side is what we see will be the structure in a post-26 era where the state is really the focus. Everybody is serving the state on that, including the successor agencies, the oversight boards. We've listed Glendale there without any kind of line joining it because it really is disconnected. Under 26, the local jurisdiction will lose much, if not all, of the control of those funds and be going to state-mandated actions. And the last slide? These are some next steps. As I mentioned at the beginning, Senator Padilla has introduced legislation, SB 659, that would delay the implementation. As the city manager noted, if nothing else, that allows for an orderly wind down. We are down to now two weeks to get all of this done. It's very, very confusing for everybody in this process because the way that the law is set up, it has us do one thing, and yet, we don't have an oversight board set up for two or three months that would be overseeing that and making the decisions on that. So there's a lot of pieces that are floating that we're still looking for answers for. So regardless of how anybody feels about redevelopment, I think it's important to slow down and do this in an orderly fashion. The redevelopment industry at this point understands that they need to be part of the fix at the state level and need to be sharing some revenue with the state and then to schools. But the two and a half months would also allow us time to work cooperatively with our legislators to create a new redevelopment program. I said, the Friends of the Public Library have adopted a resolution supporting this legislation, 659. The Glendale Chamber of Commerce also endorsed legislation that would delay, although they wanted to see what the final language of 659 looked like. So they're very supportive of the concept. Finally, Glendale Arts will be meeting next week, and from indications that they gave informally at one of their meetings, they will be taking this item up as well and looking for a resolution. With that, if there's any other comments?
Microphone. And lastly, by way of update, we are reaching out to state legislators. As we have reported last time, we actually have invited our legislators to come before you tonight to answer any questions from the halls of the Capitol, from that perspective, because surely that has value to this body as you make policy. If nothing else, we would like, unless there's an objection from the council, to be able to send a letter of support for 659 to our legislators, to the governor's office, to relay what our concerns are. Again, even if you're not supportive of redevelopment, it makes absolutely no sense to wind down in this type of manner. We're trying to claw our way out of a jobless recovery, and so the idea of not having something as a substitute to attract investment, to attract growth in the appropriate locations of our city, doesn't make much sense at this point in time. I know we do have at least one of our representatives here tonight.
Well, the representative from the fine cities of La Canada, Pasadena, Altadena, please come forward. Come forth and state your name, kind sir.
I don't know if the other members know your name, sir, but I'll...
By the way, you are my mom's favorite politician, so...
Politician, absolutely. And she reminds me of that every time I see her. So thank you very much, council members, and I also want to congratulate Mr. Ochoa on his becoming the city manager. We've worked closely in Monrovia. And I had the pleasure of sitting down with the mayor and the city manager last Friday on the invitation of the city of Glendale to talk about redevelopment, and was told that this meeting would be happening tonight, and the invitation was extended to come back again. As it's been said, redevelopment has suffered a significant blow, and I don't think people had thought it through. I personally didn't vote for, I actually voted against the legislation to dissolve redevelopment as a former mayor and council member and a fan of what has happened in the San Gabriel and the San Fernando Valley. I mean, we should be proud of what has happened, both Burbank, Glendale, Pasadena, Monrovia, Glendora. We've got the good actors in the San Gabriel Valley and the San Fernando Valley who have done wonderful projects with redevelopment, and to me, it made no sense to do away with it. Now that that's been done, you are right to wade in. I spoke to Assemblymember Tony Atkins today, who is the Assembly Point Person, and that's one of the pieces of information I wanted to share with the council. Assemblymember Atkins is the Assembly's Designated Point Person on Redevelopment. And now is the time to not only support the Padilla bill, which I also support and have asked to be a co-author of, but it's the time to make the bodies, both the Senate and the Assembly, aware of your unique circumstances. Because as it's been said, it's going to be impossible to dispose of the property to do what needs to be done in four weeks. At the very least, we need the extension of time to try to do this pragmatically. We also need to figure out some way to reestablish redevelopment or a framework of redevelopment to give you the tools that you need to do. So I would encourage the council, in addition to sending a letter of support for the Padilla bill, I would discuss amongst yourselves your unique circumstances. For example, in Sierra Madre, part of City Hall's parking lot is redevelopment property. Now, does that mean a private concession is going to come in and charge people to park at City Hall? Of course not. But nobody envisioned that when the bill was drafted. So I've encouraged them to bring their unique circumstances to the attention of the Senate and the Assembly. So to the extent you can articulate, and I have the handout that you've given, gave me last Friday, you have a great story to tell of how successful you've been. I would also work in concert with the League of Cities, the California Redevelopment Agency. You might want to extend an invitation to Senator Padilla, as well as Senator Lou, to come discuss what steps can be taken to help in your unique circumstance. My office is a resource. Please CC me on all of your correspondence, so I know what you're asking for. You have my support in trying to figure out a way to reestablish redevelopment. I know what you've done, and I know why it's important to this city. And don't be shy with your handout. With that, I'll take questions, if you have any.
Questions?
No, I just want to thank Assemblymember Portantino for being here and willing to come here and ask or address the issue that is foremost on everyone's mind as far as economic development in the cities.
Absolutely.
And all the other cities as well. So thank you for coming and addressing the issue.
Well, you have been a leader on, you know, with Habitat for Humanity, affordable housing. I mean, obviously, anybody who's been down brand knows how great this city has been, and it's important to do what we can do. So please, use me as a resource.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, again, we thank you for taking time to come down and keep up the good fight.
Yeah, and please let me know what the specific circumstances are when you write to Assemblymember Atkins. She's from San Diego. She's a former city council member in San Diego, so she's very familiar with how valuable redevelopment is. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have two cards from the public. Unless there are any other, are there any representatives from any of the other elected officials? I don't see. Okay. First speaker is Mike Mohill, followed by Herbert Milano.
Evening, council members. Mayor Protam Manukian.
Mayor Protam Najarian.
Najarian. And the view in public, my name is Mike Mohill, a longtime resident of Glendale. I believe Governor Brown mentioned the elimination of redevelopment, not just this month, but many months ago. And so you've had a long time to do something with it. As far as I see, you've been playing defense. How can we stop it? We have a cash cow here called redevelopment. I look at redevelopment as a form of corruption. Look at the housing where we are charging, let's say, they were like $500,000 to $700,000 a unit for an affordable housing unit, redevelopment money, all that kind of stuff. It's called corruption. The money should be go to the schools, K through 12 and colleges. We didn't need to pass a bond last year if we had the money. Special interest wants to stop. They want to keep the redevelopment program going. People like the Lenley Theater, Courtyard by Marriott. We have the Museum of Neon Art. Now, there's an example of wasteful money. Wasteful millions of dollars on a project that was so good, they didn't have any money to fund their own project, so they came to Glendale. And we had a councilman who rallied behind that, that project, for his reward. He's no longer here today. Alex Theater, a half a million dollars every year, the city subsidize that theater. The Sacred Cow of Glendale. If it was so good, why don't we let it stand on its own two feet? I've had calls from people telling me, Mike, Al Hoffman, in fact, told me, don't forget to mention my name, that I'm against redevelopment. Could all it has done is created nothing but corruption in this city. Councilpeople get campaign contributions. Mr. Rick Caruso, for example. Mr. Weaver was a great benefactor of his campaign contributions, and there are others too. So let's, the public, we don't need redevelopment money. Let the city stand on its own two feet. It's a political football by the politicians who want it. Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Mr. Milano?
Mayor Protam Najarian, members of the city council and city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. The original concept of having a redevelopment agency was a, was a concept that I think many cities absolutely needed. It was devised way back, at least for Glendale in the early '70s. The objective for many of the cities was to mitigate the problem with blight, especially blight in downtown, in the center of many cities. So the objectives were honorable, but I think that during the years, we have seen significant problems with redevelopment agency, and Glendale is no exception. One of the primary problems with redevelopment money has been the, the part of the law that allows the cities to abuse eminent domain, to basically take the property rights of individuals who through their own effort and their own initiative have provided for themselves some type of real estate property, and here comes the city, will take and force the sale of that property so it can be given to somebody else. I don't think that was the original intent of eminent domain, and redevelopment agencies across California have abused it. And this city abused it not too long ago, not more than a year ago, during the issue of the hotel next to the Americana. There's a significant problem with the use of the 20% set aside money used for low-income housing. Today, you can buy a multifamily apartment building with subterranean parking, land, the whole deal, $212 a square foot. And yet, the Housing Authority has been buying during the past five years and paying for $350 a square foot, $450 a square foot, and over $500 a square foot for properties that oftentimes are considered below the quality of the properties that you can buy independently. Section 8 is not going to be impacted, that's federal money. So let's be very clear that that money is not going to be touched here with this particular action. Redevelopment has been, has been used as a leverage by many developers of hotels to come to a city and says, if you don't give me redevelopment money, I'll go to another city to get redevelopment money. And as such, what we have created is corporate welfare. The school districts have been shortchanged. The Controller of California, Mr. Chang, has identified tens of millions of dollars of money that's been shortchanged to the schools. And at the end of the day, the California budget that is going to be supported by the transfer of redevelopment money eventually, that money with a better budget is money that will eventually go to support the schools. I think that it is time to not delay this thing any further and have redevelopment end its rightful end. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no other speakers on this item. Mr. Ochoa, what is the action that is required on this? Is there some consensus to send a letter?
Really, it's more if there is an objection, without objection, we would send a letter and pursue support of 659. So it's really more of an update for council to make sure that the council concurs that the benefits of redevelopment, particularly in the downtown business district, are important to the community and that the agency remain viable.
Are there any objections to that?
Well, I'd like to say a few things.
Mr. Reed?
Mr. Mohill shows his ignorance again, calling, sitting up here, is operating under the guise of corruption. If we were a corrupt city or council, we wouldn't be sitting here. A lot of what goes on with redevelopment is a lack of education with the public on what is happening to their cities. I don't know how, Mr. Portantino, how we get that word out. You see an article here and there. We knew when it was happening months ago, but the press didn't pick up on it. It wasn't newsworthy. It wasn't sensational enough. When it happens and the impacts hit, the public will then cry out, and they'll cry out too late. Talked about other projects besides Glendale, Burbank Downtown, I think was redevelopment, downtown Los Angeles, Bunker Hill, all the projects on there, all redevelopment. And in the Americana, not one single property was taken by condemnation, not one. Every one was a negotiated sale. And when the redevelopment agency was originally created, the Galleria was put in, hundreds of homes were taken. We wouldn't have a gallery today. Was it right to take it? That's another issue. That's a moral issue, maybe. But I was here in the '70s. I didn't hear outcries or whatever. More people go to the Galleria than go to Disneyland in a year. And the Americana, over 50 properties, 50 to 70 properties, all taken through negotiation, a fair price. So to say that we've done these terrible things, you know what would be down at the Americana today if we hadn't built it? It'd be vacant lots, sitting there, waiting for somebody to come in with money and do it on their own. Not likely. It's a partnership to make these things happen. You say, you want to give more money to the school. Well, they're going to get their money. You want to give more to the schools. That's great. So you educate the kids. They grow up. They go out looking for a job. The jobs aren't there. Redevelopment creates jobs. It creates revenue. So you want to give all that up? Fine, that's what the governor wants to do. Sacramento is about taking care of the state budget. In my 15 years here, the state has come down time after time to take additional sources of revenue from the city to balance the state budget. So they're going to pilfer away even more this time, and if it ain't enough, they'll be back again. So I think the governor and the state legislature made tremendous errors in this, and everyone here can disagree with me, but we're all going to live to see the outcome if these go under with no remedy for it. So whatever can be done to educate the public, get a... So whatever can be done to educate the public, get an uproar going, that may be the only way the state will listen, because the leaders up there and the Assembly and the Senate aren't listening. They're not going to support anything we want to do. We're peanuts. So to say I'm upset, yes, I'm very upset, and I just wish the public, like all of you, understood more of the impacts it's going to have on this city. Hate to see the Alex Theater, for instance, go away. It has, it'll have to be sold. Anybody can come in, as far as I know, they could tear it down. They could tear the Alex Theater down. It's private property to a degree, even as a historic, I don't know if that would factor into it, but they can modify, they can do a lot of things to it and other properties. Who knows what they'll do? What do you think of the state coming in and telling us what we can do with the land within our city boundaries? I've never heard of anything in my life, but that's what will happen. The state will run us more than they do now. So I've said enough.
I just want to say that I'm in support of sending a letter.
And I just want to add, since we were looking at some projects here that are going to be affected, one that was not listed is in the San Fernando Corridor, and that is the upgrading of the railroad crossings to make them safe, which is certainly a life safety issue, but at the same time, upgrading those crossings is one more step towards creating a quiet zone for that entire corridor. So folks that live in those areas, such as Palenconee, to the extent, most of the northwest part of Glendale here, those MetroLink, Amtrak, and Union Pacific freight trains coming through and honking their loud, blasting their loud air horns throughout. So that's one more upgrade that is in jeopardy if the redevelopment funds are sucked up by Sacramento.
Okay, it sounds like we have no objections towards the letter. Do you need a motion?
We adjourn.
No?
No motion.
General consensus, without a vote. Motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the special meeting is adjourned. Let's resume the regular meeting at Item 3.
Item 3, under Presentation and Appointments, 3A is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of January 24, 2012.
Ms. Beers.
Mayor Protem Najarian, members of the City Council, for January 24th, we have no Housing Authority Business Agenda items or for the redevelopment agency. We do have a City Council and Glendale Redevelopment Agency joint meeting at 2:30, and this is regarding redevelopment, adoption of the enforceable obligation payment schedule, and creation of the Redevelopment Obligation Retirement Fund, known as RORF. That will be coming in the afternoon. That evening, we have a packed agenda, so it should be a long night, commencing at 6:00 PM on January 24th, a number of consent items. Police chief, this is regarding the 2008 U.S. Department of Homeland Security Grant Program and additional funding awarded to the city in the amount of $577,430 for Public Safety Communications Technology. Also, police chief, this is regarding the 2009 U.S. Department of Homeland Security Urban Area Initiative Grant Program and additional funding awarded to the city in the amount of $145,440 for the procurement of aerial mapping technology. Also, under our consent items, we have another item with the police chief, this is another 2008 Department of Homeland Security, and this is in the amount of $1,084,745 for the ISIS radio system improvements. On E, we have Director of Community Services and Parks, this is a proposed donation of a painting titled "Home" to the City of Glendale from an artist in the community. General Manager of GWP, Security Guard Services at the Glendale Water and Power Utility Operations Center, this is awarding a contract. City Attorney, discussion of whether to place measures on ballot amending city charter by changing the city clerk and city treasurer positions from elected to appointed positions. On Item 7, for adoption of ordinances, we have two items. Ordinance relating to the repeal of the South Brand Boulevard Specific Plan and Amendments to Title 5 and 30 of the GMC 1995, and ordinance amending the zoning map in the South Brand Boulevard Specific Plan area. We have two items under Action. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is the status of the GWP Smart Grid Project. And General Manager of GWP, this is the public sale of surplus city-owned property located at 3445 Altera Avenue. And lastly, Mayor Protem Najarian, members of the council, we have a hearing. This is Director of Community Development regarding standards pertaining to non-conforming accessory ground signs in Chapter 28.33 of Title 30 of the GMC. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Yes, the item regarding the city clerk and city treasurer cannot be on their consent calendar because you're asking for directions.
Correct, I shouldn't have read it under consent. It was just misplaced. It'll be under Action. Thank you.
Next item, please.
At 3B is a mayor's commendation to the Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Project.
Thank you. Will the representatives from the Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Project please
Good evening, Mayor Protem, City Council members. My name is Scott Anderly, and I'm representing the Glendale Unified School District, and I am here to support Ann Kelly and the Hands Project. Ann Kelly and the Hands Project work with the Glendale Unified School District primarily during Yellow Ribbon Week, which is a week that celebrates nonviolent and anti-bullying activities at all schools throughout the district in memory of the words and actions of Dr. Martin Luther King. Over the last 10 years, more than 20,000 students in the Glendale Unified School District have taken the Hands Pledge.
Mayor Protem, City Council and Staff, my name is Paula Devine. I am Chair of the Commission on the Status of Women, and I am here with Vice Chair Denise Miller. We are proud to say that the commission has funded the entire program for the last seven years in grades K through 12, and we are very proud of that, hope to continue. And I'm so happy to introduce Ann Kelly, and her husband Bob is here as well, and
Mayor Protem Najarian, City Council members and staff, and the community of Glendale, California. My husband Bob and I are very, very proud and pleased to be here to bring a gift of thanks, heartfelt thank you, to the Commission on the Status of Women for discovering our program that is, we originate from Salem, Oregon, and have supported our simple yet powerful message that we bring to children and adults of all ages. And that is a simple pledge, 14 words. "I will not use my hands or my words for hurting myself or others." And age appropriately, we can talk about everything and anything that causes pain in our lives, from murder to suicide and all of the horrific, those horrific ends, and the little things, the everyday things that come into our lives, into our families. We are a public health approach to a public health crisis. Our efforts to break the cycles of child abuse, domestic and family violence, bullying in schools, suicides, all encompass in that 14-word pledge that we take with our hearts. This city has embraced the program, and you, Glendale, have been a model for other communities in our country. Recently, Marion, excuse me, Calamuth County Commissioners also adopted the Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting pledge and statement as their signature anti-violence campaign, just as Glendale has done through the commission's work seven years ago. So you are a model for the nation, and I thank you. I want to thank the school district, Scott, and all of the educators that have brought this program to your, to your community, to our kids and our families. Thank you on behalf of our Board of Directors in Salem, Oregon, a nonprofit organization, for your support. And by the year 2020, which represents clear vision for all of us, we will see this purple hand, red heart, around the world, and certainly all over Glendale. It is making a difference. Thank you very much. And I'd like to donate this three-piece sign set to be displayed, the pledges in English and Spanish in this particular set, to the commission. And again, thank you so much for your time and consideration. I appreciate it so much.
Our mayor will read you the commendation.
Ms. Kelly, our mayor, Mayor Friedman, could not be with us tonight. She's in Washington, DC, attending the U.S. Conference of Mayors. But before she left, she did issue a mayor's commendation, which reads, "To Ann Kelly, Executive Director of Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting. With appreciation for your distinguished leadership and dedication as founder of the Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Project. This project helps educate students and their families about their moral and legal right to live free of abuse and violence. I highly commend your outstanding efforts to make Glendale a safer, healthier place to live and work. Signed, Laura Friedman."
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item on the agenda, City Council and Staff comments.
Comments. Mr. Menuchyan.
Yes, I would like to request that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of Marilyn Mary Chopkin, the sister of our former Parks and Rec Director, George Chopkin. She succumbed to cancer last Wednesday, and the funeral's tomorrow here in Glendale at St. Mary's Church. I would like to relay my condolences to George and the whole family. So I would like to request that we adjourn today's meeting in the sister's memory.
We will certainly do so.
Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Quintero.
I wasn't here last Tuesday, so I want to personally welcome our new city manager, Mr. Ochoa. In the one week that he's been here, I've heard nothing but great reports about him. So he's off to a wonderful start. Obviously, he has a lot of energy and is meeting a lot of people, so congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Any other comments, staff? Thank you. Let's move on to the next item.
Next item is Consent Items. Following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed. Only item on this week's consent calendar is the minutes.
Is this correct, September 6, 2011?
We had been catching up on some, and we're only in January of 2012.
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second it, but I can't remember that far back.
Thank you.
I have to think back for a second whether I was here or not.
Minutes are accurate. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no objections, we have a motion and a second for the minutes, and they will stand, approved as submitted. Next item, please.
Next item is Oral Communications, and this is a three-minute event announcement portion, and we will reserve the five-minute full portion for the end of the meeting.
Yes. I have two cards. First speaker is Leon Meyer, followed by Rick Middleton.
Good evening, Acting Mayor Najarian, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Meyer. I'm here on behalf of the Friends of the Glendale Library and for our particular upcoming event, January 25th, that's the week for tomorrow. We've been working with the Character and Ethics Committee of Glendale. Now, the event, Steps to the Summit, let's see, we better have that up this time. There we go. Steps to the Summit is a story, it's just a thrilling story about two Hoover High graduates, Glendale residents, who climbed each of the highest mountains in the seven continents of our world. And the last one they did was Mount Everest last year, 29,000-plus feet. Great event, I mean, a great feat. And they're going to be at the library to talk about their book. They're also going to show slides and otherwise entertain you, and it'll be a very, very interesting event. Now, we're working with the Character and Ethics Committee on this event, and interesting enough, we have the mother of the Fijaks, Paul and Denise Fijak, who's very active in Glendale with the GAR, Association for the Retarded, Glendale College. So it's a community event, and we want everybody to come and join with us in this community event. Another interesting sideline of this event is the fact that Paul Fijak, he was born with a deformity in his right arm. Everybody who knows him knows that. And the proceeds from this, the sale of books, the library waives their usual percentage, they waive their, any claim to proceeds from the book because it's being donated, the proceeds are being donated to the Champion Athletic Foundation, the Challenged Athletic Foundation. All the proceeds go to that. So here's your way to join in the community and support the community in this very great, thrilling event. You'll be thrilled by listening to them, watching their pictures, and reading the book. If there's any further questions, fine, otherwise, as I leave, if you yet have a flyer, we'll give them to you as we leave. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next speaker is Rick Middleton.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Najarian, council members and staff. It's my great pleasure to address you this evening on behalf of the Glendale Kiwanis. We're having our biannual blood drive, which is a unique opportunity for citizens of Glendale to do something very unique in their lives, and that is to save four other lives. And I, along with my co-chair, Wanda Bostain, have organized one for this Friday, which will be held at the Elks Lodge. You have all the information on the screen. It'll be held at the Elks Lodge at the corner of Glendale Brand and Colorado Avenue, and we'd like to invite the public. There's plenty of opportunity after, in the late afternoon, for them to donate a pint of blood, and a unique opportunity this year that many people passed on in years past. For the last two or three years, they've always given away Clipper tickets. Nobody wanted them. This year, I think that will be a changed event, because I guarantee you, they're probably not going to give away Clipper tickets next year. But you'll get a voucher, you turn the voucher in, and if there are seats available, you can have those for one pint of blood, and we'd love to have all of you out there. Can I count on the council members?
Is it this Friday?
Blood do you need to get a sweet?
I'm sorry?
How much blood do you need to get a sweet?
Well, more than it took you to get elected. The hours are from 10:00 in the morning until 4:00 in the afternoon, but we're booked up through about 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon, so we've only got a few slots left. But if you don't come to our event, you can always go to the Red Cross directly, and I'm joined by Ron Farina, the Executive Director of the Glendale Red Cross, and I'll let him speak for a minute.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Red Cross knows something that we all should know, and that is there's no substitute for good, healthy blood. So we need donors to come out on a regular basis. The regular drives in this community are held at the Glendale Civic Auditorium, usually one a week. So you need to call 1-800-GIVE-LIFE to make an appointment, and I encourage you to do so. But this event is going to be very special. Hope you can join us this Friday and do a, do a blood donation for the community. And that's really where the blood goes to. It's used in the community by people who cannot donate blood for themselves, sometimes don't have families, sometimes it's the elderly, sometimes it's the young, but definitely people that are in need, and it's a lifesaving gesture. So welcome one and all to come. Thanks for having this opportunity to let us come tonight.
One last note, it is a renewable resource.
Do they have to make an appointment to go?
For this event, they can. There's a drive code that's up there. If they mention that, it'll get them into the, this If they mention that, it'll get them into the, this specific drive.
Or can they just show up at the event?
If it's after 3:00, they can just show up. We'll try and squeeze them in. I'm sure that they'll be glad for the extra donation.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you asking for yourself, profit?
Well, I might.
Okay.
Depends how sharp the needles are.
They're very sharp. They don't even hurt.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards, so that will conclude this portion of oral communications. Let's move to the next item, please.
The only item on this evening's agenda is a hearing at 9A's Director of Community Development regarding appeal of variance case number PVAR 2010-002 for property located at 1304 Carmen Drive. 9A1 is motion sustaining the Planning Commission's decision to deny the variance application.
Thank you. As you stated, this is a hearing, a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing at this point and invite up, let me go to Mr. Ochoa to introduce the staff.
If council would like, Mr. Agony can give a very brief overview to set the context for the hearing.
I will do that, and I would invite also Radha Dwang, the case planner, to come and give the detailed report. It is a case that has been presented first to a hearing officer and then denied by a hearing officer, and then the denial was appealed to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission sustained the hearing officer's denial of the variance, and it has since been then appealed to the City Council for council review.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Najarian, and members of the City Council. My name is Radha Dwang with the Planning Division, Community Development Department. The item before you is an appeal of a Planning Commission denial of standards variance case number PVAR 2010-002 located at 1304 Carmen Drive.
There you go.
The project proposal involves a first-floor addition and a new second-floor addition to an existing one-story, 1,375-square-foot house on a 5,600-square-foot lot. Two variances are required, required, one for the FAR and one for the interior setback. Concerning the FAR variance, the existing house is 1,375 square feet, which is 0.24 for the FAR. With the proposed addition of 1,397 square feet, it brings the house to 2,772 square feet, which equals to an FAR of 0.47. The zoning code limits the FAR in-floor area district two to 0.40. The proposed addition is 522 square feet over the maximum. The maximum that would be allowed is 2,250. Concerning the setback variance, the existing interior setback is 3 feet 8 inches. The applicant is requesting to maintain the existing setback for the first-floor addition at 3 feet 8 inches and also to continue that setback for the new second floor. The code, the zoning code requires for the interior setback to be 5 feet if it's an addition, if the building is between 20 and 30 feet high. However, if it's a new house or new construction for this zone, the interior setback needs to be 6 feet.
I'm sorry, if I may. If it's an addition, the requirement is 5 feet?
That's correct. That's based on the height between 20 and 30 feet high.
Okay. And if it's a new construction, it's 6 feet?
Then it's 6 feet. For the FAR variance, generally, FAR variance findings are difficult to make by the planning hearing officer as well as the Planning Commission, since FAR standard already adjusts for the individual lot size. As for the setback variance, the interior setback, again, is 5 feet for addition, 6 feet for new construction. And generally, interior setback variances are easier to approve for the first-floor additions, less so for new second story. A second story at 3 feet 8 inches setback may create a building that appear to loom over its neighbors, and also usually should be denied if the FAR variance is denied. This is a map showing the subject property is generally bounded by Mountain Street and Carmen Drive. The red marked identify the subject property. It is located in the Rossmoyn District. The lot is rectangle in shape, Zone All One, floor area district two, and it's generally flat throughout except a small portion in the front that slopes downward towards the 1304 Carmen Drive was constructed in 1926 in the Spanish colonial revival style with some peublo influences. This is a photo showing the front facade facing Carmen. These two photos shows the side view of the property. The top photo shows the front entry, which will be filled in as part of the addition, and a driveway leading to a two-car garage in the back. The bottom photo shows the recess area, which is proposed to be filled in, and its relationship to the neighbor's driveway. Again, this top photo shows the existing setback, which is 3 feet 8 inches, and the photo to the right is a close-up of the recess area, which is being used currently as an outdoor living space. This is a site plan showing generally the areas of the proposed additions on the ground floor in light blue or turquoise, and the dark, the dark blue shows the existing footprint of the building. Also, at the rear corner of the property, you see the garage is being, is also going to be enlarged by 98 square feet, which brings it to 455, which meets the two-car garage This is a view of the first-floor addition, again, showing all the areas of the proposed addition that is hatched. A brand-new second floor. And this is the proposed style of the residence. So the applicant is pursuing this design, which we call it a neo-traditional style with some colonial revival influences. Again, the addition will increase the height of the house to 25 feet 6 inches. More elevation drawings. In summary, the Planning Commission denied the applicant appeal because it, the Planning Commission determined that the variances represents self-imposed hardships. Two, the four required findings could not be made to support the variance requests, and that the design and proposed addition is insensitive and out of scale with the subject site and existing neighborhood. These variances were also denied by the planning hearing officer. In closing, staff recommends that the City Council sustain the Planning Commission denial of standards variance case number PVAR 2010-002. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any question you may have.
Mr. Manukian.
As you said, a second story could be looming over the neighbors?
Staff stated that because of the...
I'm looking at a picture. The property south of it is two stories, and there are two properties, 1315 and 1317, which I'm looking at on the internet right here, that are two stories as well. So you saying that the property could be looming over their neighbors, I find that hard to believe that in a row of two-story houses where this was, this is a one-story, very small house, any addition could be looming over anything. Am I right in my...
You have a point, Councilman Manukian, but the reason why staff stated that is that because of the closeness of the northern facade of the building.
Okay. Let's look at that picture. The building on the right, that's the house to the south of it? That's two stories?
Yes.
Okay. And it's right on the property line with no setback, right?
There is a small setback for that house as well.
What is the setback on that house?
I don't have the number.
One foot, two feet?
Maybe, maybe around three. I would...
It looks, it looks actually, you can't tell from here, can you?
It's hard to tell from the picture. You're right. But also, there's a difference in grade. As you proceed south on Carmen, the lot slopes downward also.
I understand. Thank you.
I have a question, just so I'm clear on this. Two issues are at hand. One is the FAR. So the desired 2,600, what was it, 2,660 or something? 2,665 puts it over the .40. Correct. So my calculation would be then that if, leaving the setback issue aside, if they were to have a total square footage of about 2,250, that would meet the .40, or whatever the exact calculation is. So if they were to reduce the total size by the 300 or 400 square feet to get to the .40, that would be an acceptable size, not requiring a variance.
Mayor Protem Najarian and members of the City Council, yes, that is correct. The maximum in this case for the lot size and the floor ratio would be 20, would be 2,250 is the maximum size of the house. So if the applicant is to reduce by 522 square feet, that would definitely meet code, but it would put it at the maximum, .40.
Okay. The other issues that, just so I'm clear on it, if you look at the lower picture there, there's an indentation between those two wings of the house, if you will. They're not wings, but those two portions. The applicant wants to construct the addition, at least on the first floor, construct that flush with that. You're saying that would make it a 3.8, or 3, 3-foot, 8-inch setback, whereas it should be a 5-foot on the first floor?
That's correct.
And then likewise, for the second floor, the requirement would be that it is, meets that 5-foot setback.
That's correct.
And that would be for any portion of that second floor, whether it's above the existing structures or whether it's above the existing new infill structure.
That's correct. But if I may clarify, let me go back to the site plan. When the zoning code refers to the minimum interior setback for addition, and particularly for addition, we're looking at the entire facade, not just the area of the proposed addition. So in this case, the existing areas here in white, that area would also need to be 5 feet away from the property line. So essentially, the entire facade needs to be 5 feet away, first and second story.
But it's already existing at 3.8?
But the zoning code requires that when you are proposing a second-story addition, that's when the minimum setback requirement for a building between the height of 20 and 30 feet, which is 5 feet, needs to comply with, even though it's existing. You're essentially giving up that legal non-conforming rights of 3 feet 8 inches.
That's a tough price to pay. I mean, assuming they wanted to comply with almost everything, the size, that not making it flush, just putting a second story would require them to wipe out that facade?
That is the basis of every zoning code's existing non-conforming, what is generally referred to as grandfathering rights. That means when you are grandfathered with a non-conforming setback in this case, you are allowed to maintain that as long as you are basically repairing or maintaining your property. But the second you alter the property and add square footage, you give up your non-conforming rights, and you have to comply with the code as it is today.
Okay. Just so I understand what the issues are. Are there any other questions of staff at this point? Okay. So we have an applicant. The applicant is here, and what I'm going to do is give you 10 minutes, and then we have, I think we have several, several speakers who are opposed to this or would like to speak against that. I'm going to make sure that they at least get 10 minutes on their end.
Thank you.
And I'll divide up that time as it comes.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. The project...
Your name for the record, please.
My name is Armin Shanazarian with AMAC Group, 639 West Broadway, Glendale. Basically, we started the project roughly about three years ago. My client wanted to develop this lot. He wanted to have a, basically, second-floor addition to the existing house. We met with the planning and the zoning staff for this project. Originally, the client wanted to add roughly about more than 3,000 square feet. We instructed to him that that's not possible, so we revised the plan, and we modified to a point that, we got to this point that basically he's comfortable. The existing house has indicated it's 1,375 square feet, and what we're trying to do is add basically 75 square feet to the first level and 1,215 square feet to the second level, which adds up to 1,290 square feet. I think the calculation shown on the board was wrong. It was roughly about 1,370, which is supposed to be 1,290. We're trying to maintain the existing first floor, the 3-foot, 8-inch, but the second floor, it's, on one side, it's 6 feet, and the other side is 9 feet, so it was represented wrongly again. We're not trying to maintain a 3-foot 8. We're trying to have it 6 feet second floor. And 9 feet on the other side of the thing, if you go to the floor plan, you'll see it on the, basically, south side of the project where the driveway is roughly about 11 feet, and the north side is 6 feet. If you see the dash line over there, that's indicate the second floor line above. So that's basically what we do. As you indicated, the allowable floor area ratio is 2,250. We're basically seeking for 415 square feet more, which is coming up to 2,665 square Try to get this project going. In process, in conjunction with this project, we had a meeting with the Rossmoyn Homeowners Association. I just want to thank them for their time and effort. We had, we set up a meeting. We asked the neighbors to participate. Roughly, I believe, somewhere between 10 to 11 people participated, and we just got some feedback from them, and then modified the plan based on that. The original project, as indicated, was architectural style, but we were advised to do a Spanish style design, which we did. But I don't know if this is a time to represent it to you, or this is something that designer might decide or not. That's, I'm willing to, I mean, to give you the drawings as we submitted. Basically, my client wanted the look of a house which is located on 911 East Mountain Street. The package includes three different designs of architectural elevations, and the picture indicates the house that my client desires to have, which is maybe about two or three houses away on Mountain Street. I just want to also indicate that the lot is roughly 5,600 square feet. The average lots in that block is roughly about 5,800 square feet. This is a lot that is 45 feet wide and 125 feet deep. And as I indicated, the average lots out of those 16, 17 lots over there, it's 5,800 square feet averaging. So that's what the dilemma comes in, because the house is not a big house. It's 2,600 square feet, plus or minus, and it's basically a three-bedroom house. But lot being so narrow, that's what we're trying to ask for the existing house to be maintained, the first floor to be maintained at 3-foot 8 inches. And also, we did a, we're just basically demoing 36% of the house, basically, and maintaining the floor choice, I mean, the... Basically, I'm maintaining the floor choice, I mean, the roof rafters and everything else. And even trying to create the gaps and try to maintain the integrity of the house, the look of it. That's all the comments that I, on this.
Can you please state again, why do we have these pictures?
This is basically the look of the house. If you, if you see the drawings, basically, this is the look of the house that my client desired to have.
Oh, similar style.
Similar style, which is on the neighborhood. But we had a feedback from the Rossmoyn Homeowners Association that they want a Spanish-style house in that area. So that's what I did, three different elevations for the project, so to decide. But basically, what we're seeking is something to maintain the 3-foot 8-inch at the first level and have the second level 6-feet on one side and 11-feet at the second level on the other side. But the existing 9-feet at the first level. And then the floor area ratio, obviously, about 415 square feet more than what is allowed.
Let me ask a question that you raised. Is the style at issue before us at this point?
No, the style will have to go before the designer view board before you even get, can discuss it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shonazarian. Also representing the respondent, Mr. Minas.
I was in here because he was in a meeting of the Rossmoyn Homeowners Association. I thought if you have any question, because I was not in that time, I was out of the country, so he was attending the meeting. I just put down his name in case if you have.
Oh, I see, okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else then, speaking on behalf of the applicant? Mr. Shon, is there anyone else speaking on behalf?
No.
Okay, so that concludes that. Are there any questions? He's already sat down.
Yeah, I have a question. There was some debate, I think Mr. Dong or, or Mr. Hagani will answer it, but is there some debate about the setbacks? The applicant says that it wasn't accurate portrayed.
If you go to the slide number two, it indicates that the setback is. The writing, the first sheet.
The site plan?
Uh, no. Sheets, I mean, the comment as well.
So you're saying your second floor meets that setback?
Yeah, second floor meets 6-feet, it is on the plan.
But not the first floor?
First floor, we're trying to maintain it 3-feet.
You want to, I see. But the requirement would be, I mean, you would need a variance then to maintain that 3.8?
I need to have 5-feet.
For the first floor?
Yes.
Okay, I, I'm getting a clear picture now. Did you get your, was that, was that your questions? Okay, any other questions at this point? I'm going to go to the.
I have one of staff.
Mr. Weaver.
Staff wants to talk. Did staff ever get all the information they needed that they asked for multiple times in order to make a decision?
I'm going to ask Rader Dwan to come and answer this question because there were several, there were back and forth communications, rather. Would you please answer that question?
Mayor Protem Najarian and members of the City Council, yes, throughout the history of this project, through the planning hearing officer as well as the planning commission hearing, staff requested for a number of time from the applicant drawings to demonstrate the calculation for the 50% removal of the roof and the walls. And we received some drawings, but they were inconsistencies and inaccuracies, so additional clarifications were needed. However, we never received those additional drawings.
And that led, that led to your denial?
Correct.
Of the project? So it's here without anybody in the city receiving all the information the planning department needed to make a decision.
And the issue is the 50% demolition that will then in and of itself remove the non-conforming status of the, of the property.
So we have an incomplete set of plans before us.
If I may just put this into a little bit of context, as, what we get from decision-makers is that the variance for the FAR is more difficult to make and usually variances for setbacks are easier to make. Now, this has been noticed and as, as an addition and not new construction. If more than 50% of the roof and the, and the walls, exterior walls are removed or abandoned in place, then it becomes new construction.
Understood.
So we just, when we, someone comes to us with a project, we may not agree with it, we may not recommend it, but we would like to let them have a clear path to approval if that's what the decision-makers choose to do. And to add a second story to an existing foundation and walls that were built only for one story is difficult. And same goes for the roof. It's usually not enough structure there to.
Structurally, you have to beef it up.
So if one were going to approve a setback variance for 5-feet, for 3-feet, 8 inches versus 5-feet, you might as well ask for 3-feet, 8 inches versus 6-feet and be allowed new construction and just build it from scratch properly. Because once you get into building plan check, you're going to run into all sorts of problems if you're trying to jimmy this while keeping 50% of the walls and roof bearing some of the weight. It's just so much easier. That's why we were requesting more information.
But that's not, that's not what the law says. I mean, you know, maybe it's easier for you, but it's not easier for them. You know, having a 6-foot setback as opposed to 5, or tearing things down, that's not what we should be looking at.
You're right.
We're looking at a variance for FAR as well as setback. How they do it, how they do it, whether it's difficult for them or if it's difficult for plan check, that's not at question here. The, the issue is the FAR and the setback.
However, if I may, Mr. Mayor Protem, staff needs to get accurate information in terms of the calculation of what will be demolished later on. And it, it becomes an issue for us to have on record the actual proposal for demolition that will then become, be coming to the department for review later on to see if they have indeed, this is, it makes it easier for the applicant as well to know that if they're going to exceed the 50% demolition, to know ahead of time what exactly they need as opposed to halfway through the construction when they in fact get to the point where they demolish more than 50% and we have to put a stop work order. In that sense, it's a better service to the applicant to have the full information ahead of time. And that's why staff asks for accurate calculations and accurate, accurate drawings of the calculations.
If I, if I may continue, I don't buy that argument. If they don't know what they're doing and they're not providing accurate plans, that's their problem. Let them deal with it, let them provide the accurate plans. It's the responsibility of the professionals that they hire to provide us and the city and staff all the accurate information, including the plans. And they should be aware of what the rules are for the city in terms of demolishing 50% or more or less. Let them deal with it. I'm, I'm not going to sit here and make a decision on what's going to happen in the future and based on that, grant the variance or not grant the variance. I'm strictly going to look at the FAR, which is what they're asking for, and I'm going to look at the setback. If they can't build it later and they don't provide the accurate information and they're not aware that if it's more than 50% demolished, it's a, it's a new building, then it's their problem. They're, they're going to lose the money. They're not doing their due diligence. That's what's going to happen. But I'm going to look at the FAR and the setback. So let's not throw other things into the mix and look at exactly what they're asking for us. And what happens in the future is based on their professional expertise and whether they provide the, the accurate and complete information, which they should, so.
Truly, at this point, I think we can focus on the two items, as you indicate, focus on the two items that are being requested for variance. You know, the notion of, of providing additional information based on experience just for context is just that, strictly context.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, let's move on to the other speakers. Keith Wagner, followed by Carol Welling.
Mayor Protem.
I have about three speakers. Yes. Perhaps opposed to this, so I'll give each of you three minutes and I think that'll be an equitable balance of time.
Okay. I'm Keith Wagner, Mayor Protem, City Council members. I'm relatively new to the neighborhood. I'm probably one of the most recent people to move in. In fact, I'm the house that's to the south in the picture and a little bit lower. There's actually a, an incline, so I'm actually not as tall as it looks. But I'm simply here to urge you to sustain the planning commission's denials. Appeal is, is based on hardship, which according to the, the planning commission report, they have not met, they have not made the hardship requirements. And these codes help to ensure that the, the surrounding, that the house and lot sizes are balanced, which throughout the Rossmoyn area has been fairly well sustained and goes to quality of life. And the reason I moved to Glendale and moved to the neighborhood and invested in, in the Granting the, the variance would increase noise issues between all the houses, airflow, all of that would be impacted. And there would be, I, I think the hardship then would be on the, the neighbors and the other houses that, that then would be impacted, the, the surrounding properties. And all of this comes on the eve of the Rossmoyn Historical District that's about to be enacted. And both of, all of our properties border on that, I mean, we're right, right on the edge of it, of the, the new historical designation. So I just simply would like to urge you to sustain the, the denial. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Welling, followed by Lila Ramirez.
Good evening, my name is Carol Welling, resident of the city. First thing I'd like to say that the gentleman that spoke on behalf of this project misspoke. The Rossmoyn Homeowners Association was really not involved. It was, it was just the board and that has caused a rift among our group, unfortunately. This hardship, I think, is self-imposed. And I agree with the last speaker that it's basically, it should be looked at the other way, that it's a hardship for the community because we have to have standards. In fact, I'm, I'm one of the people that live here with my garage on the lot line. So I'm listening very carefully in how you're going to handle this. Maybe I'd like to do something with my garage right on the lot line. Next, I'd like to say that I think you should be supporting the planning commission and the planning department, who both have, have recommended that this be denied. The planning commission voted 5 to 0. In fact, I've forgotten the name of the man that was the, the head commissioner, but he, before he cast his vote, he said this is a no-brainer. You can look at the records on that, this is a no-brainer. It, it's, it does not meet the standards that we're trying to apply here in, here in Glendale. And I'm sure the man can do something with his property, but when he bought it, he, he didn't buy a pig in a poke, he saw what he was buying. And now for him to run around trying to change all the rules and variances here and there, I, I don't understand that. The last thing I'm going to mention, and this happened down in, we have a house down Orange County, and somebody put a second story on a house without ensuring that the foundation would, would, would support a second story. And I was wondering if that has ever, has been looked at? That's, that's my only other question. I, I'm urging the council, I don't know now, it looks like you're not going to vote on anything, but that you support the commissioners that you've appointed and you support your, your staff, who are quality staff, there's no question about it. Mr. Hagani is one of the best. And he doesn't take frivolous, nor does his department take frivolous positions. This has been well thought out, well researched. I've, I've been up and spoken a couple of times on it. And, you know, when does it end? Thank you very much.
You. Lila Ramirez.
Good evening, Lila Ramirez, resident, Mayor Protem Najarian, members of the City Council. Welcome, Mr. Menuchyan. Welcome, Mr. Ochoa, staff. Thank you for your questions preceding this, the hearing. Staff has prepared and presented a thorough report on the appeal case before you. No evidence was presented to you tonight in support of granting the variance as requested by the appellant in his appeal. Granting the variance would be contrary to the objectives, general purpose, and intent of the zoning ordinance. The burden of proof cited on the appeal is on the applicant to establish the findings of fact as required by the zoning ordinance. The applicant did not meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Please sustain the planning commission's determination and deny the appeal. We do not, well, some of us do not wish to deny the opportunity to expand or add on to the home. It just asks that it stay within the requirements of the zoning code in consideration of protection of our neighborhoods and protecting the quality of life. Thank you.
You. I don't have any other cards, but I'm informed that Planning Commissioner Chang Lee is available for any questions. One would like to ask questions to him, if he's available. And I don't have any other cards on this item.
So you want comments?
Brought up from the.
I'm sorry? Okay, we'll give you some rebuttal. We'll give you a three-minute rebuttal time.
The item was brought out that we did not submit proper.
Can you, can you raise the mic?
I apologize. We did not submit the calculation to justify that. If you take a look at your exhibit number 10 on your packet, and if you take a look at the. This is the only copy that I have. It was very clearly indicated in details what was being removed, what was being sustained, and how many, how many percentage was being removed. As I indicated, roughly about 34, 30 to 36% is being removed, the rest is being, so that was submitted. But in the planning commission hearing, this was not presented. So this is one of the problems that I had, that some of the data was not presented and some of the data was not clearly indicated. As indicated over here, that the second floor is being 3-foot 8 inches rather than 6-feet. And we're just trying to maintain 1-foot 6, I mean, 3-foot 8 inches on the first level. So, and then as far as the integrity of the project, as far as structural, there are so many different methods to, to, to the second-floor addition without touching the existing foundation or touching the walls because there are post-embined methods that you can reinforce the project. And it's been done throughout the city. I have done so many projects like that with our engineers. So it's not a problem as far as demoing the walls or maintaining the walls. Thank you.
You. Okay, I will close the public hearing. Actually, let me not, let me, let me reopen it. There may be a question that comes out during our, our discussions to keep that. Comments, positions, arguments?
Position, I'll give my position. From the staff report, first steps. At hearing, the planning hearing officer took the case off calendar for the project to be resigned. That was July 2010. August, plans were submitted. Case planner requested plans and calculations. September 14th, case planner noted inconsistency in the plans compared to the revised four plans. Indication was insufficient information to assess how much existing roof, exterior walls were to be removed. were to be removed. September 29th, a revised exhibit summary before was submitted again. Case continued. October 5th, revised demolition plan was submitted, incomplete. October 19th, hearing officer continued the variance case scheduled for October 20th because we needed additional information and a meeting with the public. October 20th, hearing officer did not grant a request to continue it, and on the 26th, denied it. No appeal put in on November 10th. February 16th, planning commission continued the case because the applicant wanted to meet with the neighbors again. Now, this is a pattern followed by this designer in past years. It doesn't carry any weight with me at all. Staff said what they wanted. The information was not provided as it should be. Can't leave it up to the designer, whatever, it's their thing, they should be doing it complete and submitting in? No, no. Staff asked for something, then provide it. If we're going to start going down this road, then you're going to have a lot more projects coming in, incomplete, and you'll have a council sitting here trying to figure out what the heck's going on. It's not the way you do it. Nobody on the planning commission could make the findings, and I can't either. It's a self-imposed hardship. And the one word I haven't heard here tonight is the word compatibility, which we went through year after year after year, having homes that are compatible in the neighborhood. And look at those lots, they're small. They were never laid out in that subdivision that creates two-story houses. Yeah, it will loom down. The second story is going to look down on the one-story houses. There'll be no privacy in the backyards. The applicant wants a bigger house, then he ought to buy a bigger house. And how it'll go together structurally, well, that's when he gets to the building and safety, permit checks, all that'll come out. Structurally, the whole second, the first floor will have to probably be beefed up to carry the loading on the second floor. Just fraught with, with problems. But I've seen this pattern before. I don't appreciate it. I don't like it. It's not compatible, no findings, and the requests of the city staff were ignored. So coming in and handing out new plans here tonight, that's a pattern in the past. Councils of the past have said no to this approach. I'm not about to start changing what we have done in the past decade and start down this other path again. Maybe some of my colleagues will, but I won't. So I will sustain the planning commission's denial of this, of this variance.
You. Manukian?
Yes. I do believe very strongly that everyone has a right to improve their properties within, within the zoning, zoning code. And I, I don't like the, when the approach is taken, well, it's, it's better for them if you don't give them this variance because of this and that. In this, in this instance, regardless of who the applicant is, who the designer is, I believe that we have to take the application at its face value, look at the deliberations of the planning commission, which I appreciate and thank you very much, and, and look at the code and see if there are, if the applicant is presenting their case in a convincing manner. And today, they have not, in my opinion. The floor area ratio, forty-seven, is certainly not a hardship, and it's certainly not an exceptional circumstance. Therefore, I will not, I will sustain, I will vote to sustain the planning commission's findings.
Thank you. Mr. Quintaro.
Hey, the issue before us has just stated is whether we can find the, find a reason for the variances and specifically to overturn the planning commission five-zero vote and the staff. And nothing has been presented that, in my opinion, reaches that threshold. And let me now make a few comments. We worked on these FARs citywide for years and years. And actually, I believe all four of us, it was before Mayor Friedman's time, but all four of us worked on these issues, right down to four point zero and three point five and all of the different numbers that we argued about and decided on for these individual neighborhoods. And so, in my opinion, it's not going to be difficult to reach that four point oh. I do think the four point oh is quite generous here in the Rossmoyn neighborhood. This designer, in my opinion, has done excellent work throughout the community, both in commercial and residential properties. He has many years of experience. He has a team around him. And I'm sure that working with the owner, they can achieve what they're looking for, the owner to maximize his allowable square footage, and then the residents to have something, to have a home that ties in and, and sort of works with the rest of, of the neighbors. So no, I don't see any way I can reach the variance.
Okay. Thank you. My feelings on this are generally the same as my colleagues. However, I have a slightly different twist at the end. I do believe that there's no adequate showing to get the variance for the point four seven FAR. That should be something that's definitely doable. However, so I would sustain the, the planning commission's decision as to that. However, something that, that troubles me, and I think it just, it came out, I'm not sure we really had enough tension on it. In two instances, we had two neighbors. We saw Mr. Wegner's house, and Mr. Manukian pointed out, "Whoa, that house looks pretty close to that property line, is it? Two feet, is it three feet?" And Ms. Welling said, "Well, my garage is right on the property line." And what I heard from the planning director is that should any of these properties or anyone else in the city have a legal non-conforming condition, and you want to do new construction on your lot, on your house, you would have to make your property conform. So hypothetically, and I don't mean to pick on Ms. Welling, but if she were, and I don't know your home, but if you were to desire to place an addition to your home, my understanding is that you would have to bring that garage into conformity. And conformity would mean bring it back five feet, destroy your garage and rebuild it. Mr. Wegner, same thing with you. If you wanted to add something to your house, as tasteful and as appropriate and compatible as it might be, the fact is that our zoning code is a unfeeling monster in that, well, let me not monster, unfeeling document, in that you would have to move your facade back to whatever that side setback is. So I have a problem, and in this case, we have someone who's already got a three-foot-eight-inch side setback, which we know is legal non-conforming. He's talking about a second floor that is going to meet that new requirement of the six-foot setback. But our zoning code says that's not enough. You've got to bring that entire existing facade back, the extra one and a half, one foot four inches or maybe two foot four inches, depending on how we rule, whether it's a five foot or six, six foot. And I, I find that kind of unfair. I find it unfair to this applicant. I find it, it would be unfair to Ms. Welling. It would be unfair to Mr. Wegner if they were in the same situation. The planning commission, I understand, may not have that discretion to outwardly state they don't like the zoning code, or they don't like general principles of zoning. And this may be basic principles of zoning that we're talking about. But I find that somewhat unfair. I don't know if anyone else agrees with me. I don't know if that's something we can address on this particular issue, but I do see some inequity and unfairness to perhaps thousands of homeowners whose homes have been built and existed peacefully with their neighbors, and they want to do a little addition, and they may be faced with this draconian requirement to lop off part of their house to make it fit within the zoning. So that's, I mean, that's where I would-
I got a rhetorical question, because I don't agree. You can keep going till we-
It's just, it's just a statement, and it's not the issue directly at hand. And I think that my, my colleagues have-
Can I ask one question, staff? How long has it been that way in the code? How many years?
The non-conforming issue has always been in the code, and it is a basic principle of zoning. And Mr. Najarian, you're correct that it is heartless and without feelings. It is really about what was at some point built and is not the standard today. There are reasons behind why the standards have changed, and the council always, always has the opportunity to revisit those and change those. However, that has, every time we've brought that issue up, the council has not chosen to go less restrictive but more restrictive.
And I understand that, and, and I'm not seeking a revision of the zoning code or revisiting the general principles of bringing legal non-conforming into conformity. But, I mean, the sense of unfairness isn't lost on me, and thinking in the future, you know, I think there may be others out there who may be surprised at how the zoning, general zoning principles would be applied to your property in the event you needed to do something in the future. But my general decision then today is to sustain the planning commission's decision.
Well, my experience in the past many, many years in real estate and so forth is that it's hardly ever triggered, you use the term a small project, something small being done to a house. Usually, it's triggered when you're knocking over more than half of the house, going up, doing a huge addition to a house. That's when you run into these type of issues, and I think it's entirely appropriate. The classic case for me was a home of an actress that we're all very familiar with, who literally just left a wall standing in her home. It was a remodel. It was just a rehab, and that touched off quite a bit of debate, and this is in another city. So it's not with us tonight, but I think that is just a standard for zoning, at least here in Southern California, as far as I know.
Mr. Mayor Protem, do you want a motion?
Yes, let's-
Do you like to close the public hearing?
I will not close the public hearing. Thank you.
I'll move nine eight one.
Second.
May I, Mr. Mayor Protem, just ask that we have an additional sentence added to the motion to, for the council to incorporate the findings of the planning commission and planning hearing officer into the decision.
It's fine with me.
It's fine with me, too. I have a second.
All right, that, that change will be made to motion.
Take the roll call, please.
Council members, Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Caro?
Yes.
Weaver? And Mayor Friedman is absent.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next item.
Mayor Protem, and council, next on the item is, next item on the agenda is oral communications. This is the portion where each speaker is allowed five minutes. Discussion is limited, time is not part of this agenda. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager, mayor, further matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you. First card is Herbert Milano.
Good evening. Mayor Protem Najarian, members of the city council and city staff. It is, it is my belief that whenever there is a new management, that we have an opportunity to basically address some of the issues that we have been bringing up before the city council in years past. And hopefully, with a set of fresh eyes, we'll have an additional level of candor with regard to the situation that he's facing. In the month of May of last year, I presented to you a suggestion during the budget hearings, that the city should consider seriously addressing an alternative budget without the redevelopment money in it, as if the redevelopment was not available to you. I made that suggestion because I looked at the trends and finances of the city of Glendale. I want to present a couple of things, and we may have to go through these slides a little bit fast. Glendale's financial challenges, despite continual revenue increases. We've had increases in mid-management hiring that has impacted it, increases in pay rates across top earners that have been very significant, increases in payroll benefits that have been a significantly increasing burden. And therefore, the solution should be in reducing the internal cost burden first before you burden the public. Next slide. Here's a quick history of Glendale property tax revenues since 1978, 2010. I'm presenting this so that we can do away once and for all by blaming Proposition 13 with the financial woes of the city. Next slide. Has it constrained the city? Here's a comparison between 1978 and actually, I updated it to 2011. Next slide. Inflation rate was 234% during that period. Property tax rate change 1,100% in revenues. Change. And here is a graph. Mr. Ochoa, I want to address to you, this is the trend in the property taxes of the city of Glendale, and you can see that the increases have been exponential. There is no way that we can address the impact of the city's finances based upon the property taxes. They have been increasing continually. Next slide. But Glendale government salary and wage trends have been very significant, and I wish I had the more recent and more current information. I have to wait until at least April to get the rest of the information. Next. Here's an example between 2000 and 2008. Basically, we have been going through a significant increase year after year, even in 2003, when we had a shortage of $10 million. It didn't matter. Pay and benefits have been increasing at an exponential rate. It's unsustainable, and I've been saying it for years. Next slide. Inflation rate, 24%. Payroll increases, but in that period of time, 50%. Pension increase, 300. Medical insurance, 500%. Next slide. Middle management, huge increases between 1999, when Mr. Starber came in, to 2008, 40% increase in middle management. Next slide. The pay of managers, police, and fire. For managers, incredible increases year after year despite the recession. Next slide. So we can go quickly. Property tax revenue increases between 2000 and 2010, 158%. Next. Utility users' tax increase, 66%. Next slide. Transfers from the Glendale Water and Power, 67%. Those transfers are aimed to support the general fund. So there is no way not to consider those transfers as being a hidden tax that we are paying, plus the 7% additional utility users' fee. So overall, we're basically looking at around a 17% tax effectively on the utilities. Next slide. Salary expense, 54%. Next. Workers' compensation claims. Here's a big problem. Eight point seven million in the year 2000, $16 million. You have a significant problem with personnel and their claims or workers' compensation. You want five millions of dollars? It's right there. We have a slight increase in the past year, about $3 million increase, but still, it's a significant internal problem. Next. Pension contributions. In 2008, 4 million; in 2010, 23 million. And in about three to four years, it's going to be hitting 40. You have one huge problem, and it is right there. Next slide. Medical insurance, from 4 million to 22 million. This is triple the rate of increases throughout the United States. Next slide. It's done. So there it is. I guess the city council can take a look and say, "We are going to increase additional fees. We're going to impose it on the public." But this is the public that's been heavily burdened by the recession this past few years. I think that it is time for the city to look internally and tighten its budget. Thank you very much.
You. Mr. Mohill will be followed by Ruby DeVera.
Good evening. Council Protem Najarian, I'm sorry. Council members, my name is Mike Mohill, long-term resident of Glendale. The various charges brought against former councilman John Draymond after the April 2011 election- election only goes to show the arrogance of Mr. Draymond. The mayor of Montrose, who fell from the grace of the people who gave him money, put up yard signs and walked the precincts on his behalf. As requested in the Glendale news press, Mr. Draymond skirted city ordinances, allegedly took illegal campaign contributions and allegedly embezzled money from the Montrose Shopping Park Association and its weekly farmer's market. How the investigation will resolve itself, I'm sure Mr. Draymond, the public, would like to know. Why didn't our elected officials and senior staff inform the public of their knowledge of Mr. Draymond, misdeeds, or question Mr. Draymond's character? Barry Allen presented pictures inside Mr. Draymond's condo and told the public, Mr. Draymond did not take out building permits till long after he was caught one year later. Why did city management remain silent on their knowledge of both the alleged condo makeover and the alleged embezzlement charges, long, long before any investigation ever got started? In retrospect, when other city council members heard that Mr. Draymond had a flood in his condo, why didn't they offer to help, help him? After all, don't friends help friends in need? Instead, our council members remained silent as they do today. For the people, when will the city council demand from the planning department and the Glendale Police Department the information regarding Mr. Draymond's embezzlement charges and his failure to obtain building permits? Sadly, the whole Draymond affair only makes the public become cynical of our city officials. Guilt by association. Mayor Laura Freeman, Councilman Frank Quintero, Councilman Ara Najarian and Councilman Dave Weaver. Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill.
Thank you. Ruby De Vera? Followed by Geraldine Yumping.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Ara Najarian, members of the city council and new city manager Scott Ochoa. My name is Nini Maldonado and I'm speaking on behalf of Ruby De Vera and past president of the Filipino-American Business Association of Glendale, established in 1991 under the auspices of the Glendale Chamber of Commerce. We are here tonight in opposition of the demotion of Mayor Zone Administrator Edith Fuentes, a longtime resident of the city of Glendale and a dedicated city employee. The demotion of Edith Fuentes not only tarnished her reputation, stellar work history, but had caused her shame, humiliation, mental anguish and emotional distress. In addition, her professional reputation has been severely damaged. As a past president of the Filipino-American Business Association of Glendale, Edith performed her duty to the best of her ability and was instrumental to the advancement of the Filipinos in the city of Glendale. She also made sure that the association organized under the auspices of the Glendale Chamber of Commerce 20 years ago was certified as the 501(c)(3) group with the assistance of the then-council member Gus Gomez. This action by the city of Glendale is a slap on the face of the Philippine community and should be reconsidered. Thank you very much. And I have some letters of petition from-
They'll be accepted into the record. Geraldine Yumping, followed by Patrick Masiehi.
Mayor Protem, Mr. Najarian, members of the city council, new city manager Scott Ochoa, staff, good evening. My name is Geraldine Yumping and I'm the current president of Suroptimist International of the Verdugos. And with me here tonight are some members of my organization. We appeared before all of you on October 19th, 2011, expressing a decision to support the appeal of our longstanding member, Edith M. Fuentes. We are members of an international volunteer organization and we are also local business and professional women. We feel qualified to help other women's causes and issues. As we said before, past region governor Edith M. Fuentes is still one of the most accepted leaders and administrators in this community. Her hard work and commitment in helping many people in this community and other communities speak well of her efficiency and dedication. Her integrity is beyond reproach. Next month, February 18th, 2012, marks her 19th year anniversary working with the city. Yes, 19 years. How would you feel if after doing your job that long, all by yourself, all of a sudden be told, "We have decided to demote you because we now find you inefficient, not doing assigned tasks and a below-standard employee"? This is very serious. We cannot allow this adverse action of the city to demote her to happen without expressing our dismay. We are here to support her and will stand by her cause all the way. As we continue to coordinate and work with community members, other business and professional people, groups and organizations in the city, we will see that she gets over this hurdle and injustice. Suroptimist is an international volunteer organization in 120-plus countries and territories with close to 100,000 members. Suroptimist means best for women. Our vision is to be the leading organization of business and professional women, enabling other women and girls to live their dreams, take control of their lives and live according to their own values and principles. Yes, live accordingly, because women without values and principles cannot live their dreams. The fact remains that throughout history, in every country in the world, women face additional obstacles and discrimination solely because of their gender. This is why we stand for what we stand against for. We will bring any answer to your questions that you may have. I am also appealing to everyone here today and those that are viewing, the viewing public, that tomorrow, January 18th, 2012, at 3:00 PM will be the motions hearing by the Civil Service Commission on this appeal of Edith Fuentes's demotion here in the same room. So I want everyone to show their support. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Masiehi, followed by Harry Zavos.
Mayor Protem Najarian and members of city council, my name is Patrick Massey. I'm a Glendale resident. First and foremost, I want to welcome our new city manager, Mr. Ochoa. Welcome to the city of Glendale. You bring new hope to a lot of people in this town. And I also like to start tonight by following up on the six questions that I asked our city attorney last month. I have not received a response from the city attorney. And tonight, to my regret, I have to start answering these six questions. And it's very tough because you want to believe that you live in a town where discrimination does not happen. You want to believe that the constitution of the United States is upheld in terms of equality. But unfortunately, we do have a department within the city that is overextending its guidelines and rules that have been given to it by the city and by the rules of the state of California. My first question, if you remember, Mr. Garcia, last month was, does the city neighborhood services conduct racial profiling against certain ethnicities, races by making false violation charges? And tonight, by evidence of pictures and documentation, I will start answering that question. This is not an isolated incident. I have information from northwest Glendale and other neighborhoods in Glendale that show a pattern of neighborhood services field representatives actually making false violation allegations against certain ethnicities in the city of Glendale. I'm going to pass out the email and a set of pictures. Unfortunately, I have one set of pictures that needs to be shared by our city manager and the city council. It has been submitted for record. These documents will show how a city field representative on January 28th of 2010 decided to give violation notice, warning, to two homes in my neighborhood for having their holiday lights up. The quote, city ordinance clearly states that on January 31st, people are supposed to bring down their lights and they have till January 31st to bring down their holiday lights. But field representative XYZ, I will not mention his name, obviously, decided that he was going to give this warning citation to two homes in a neighborhood owned by one ethnicity and not the third home owned by another ethnicity. This is not what this city should be all about. And Mr. Engel, the department head, has known about this for over a year now. And I'm wondering if there's been any action taken with training perhaps and with conversations with our city attorney to make sure that things like this don't happen in this town. The issue at hand is serious because this is not something that happens only in my neighborhood. It happens throughout Glendale. Every time you gather with friends, one of the first things that people discuss around the dinner table is who's been picked by neighborhood services lately? That's the topic that many people in my circle talk about. And when I say my circle, I mean the more than 500 people that showed up to my wedding. I have a big circle in Glendale. So this is a serious issue, Mr. Ochoa. I have held this back till now because your predecessor would not solve this issue. A lot of us have hope that based on your background, some changes can come this way. I hope you can do a review and I have six questions that I'm going to answer in the next few weeks. This is just the tip of the iceberg. I will also expose how the same neighborhood services stopped a fully permitted roofing project and wrongfully accused the owner of not having a permit while making a racial remark back in January of 2004. All this evidence will come your way through pictures, documentation and also video footage. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Harry Zavos, followed by Carol Welling.
Council, my name is Harry Zavos. I'm the president of Glendale. Last week, as I watched revelations made from this podium, it stirred feelings that I had several months ago when another critic of the city was outed as having a decades-old criminal record. A sense of shame and disappointment regarding the person outing and then the same for the person doing the outing. If the counterfeiting conviction of Barry Allen is true, and I've heard nothing to persuade me that it is not, it is a stain on his reputation and his alone. I leave it to others to debate whether there were extending circumstances surrounding that conviction or if since then he has rehabilitated himself. My energies I want to devote elsewhere. But nevertheless, tonight, it's that news that brings me here because it has directly affected me due to a Wiseman website devoted to the subject. It had a page listing Barry Allen's known associates. My name appears on that list or appeared on that list because it's been taken down, although it's not been replaced by an apology to those people who appeared on the list, but rather a statement that the page had fulfilled its purposes. All of us know the innuendo that those words, "known associates" in connection with a reputed criminal are intended to convey. That those named are somehow linked to and involved in similar nefarious activity. That libelous, that clearly defamatory innuendo is utterly false and without a shred of evidence to support it. It in no way fosters honest public debate. It serves to deflect attention away from facts and arguments to personalities and yes, Mr. Wiseman, by using guilt by association. The strategy is well-known. If you cannot respond to content that you disagree with, then attack the messenger. And in this case, do it through false innuendo and character assassination. I am concerned also because I detected a path by a councilman to go down that same road, to use a Barry Allen decades-old conviction to beat into silence any possible critics, including the news press. And by referring to those who may share any of Barry Allen's criticisms of the city as Barry Allen's, and I quote, "merry band of thieves". Well, I will admit, I have shared some of the concerns that have been expressed in the Vanguard newsletter. And I tell you, no, I am not a thief and I am my own man, my own man. Finally, I would hope that the council would think twice before going down a road that leads to a censorship and demagoguery and which undermines one of the basic fundamental elements of our democracy, protected by the First Amendment, the marketplace of ideas. Now, I'd like to shift because I had intended to welcome the new city manager on a more bright note, but here I am and I would like to welcome him. And I would like him to know that I have some appreciation for the monumental task that he has in discharging his responsibility regarding the day-to-day operation of this city. And I understand how he has constraints and he has pressures on him that I do not share and consequently, there'll be many times that he probably sees things differently than I do. But I want to assure him that I am here wanting to be of help, wanting to be of service if he is willing to accept it. And I also want to say that should I come to this podium ever to criticize publicly anything that's going on in the city, I will do as I have done in the past, confine myself to facts and cogent argument and steer clear of attacking personalities.
Thank you, Mr. Zavos.
Carol Welling, resident of the city for 40 years. Mr. Ochoa, there are people who call Glendale- There are people who call Glendale Dollsville or Dolldale. I'm here to tell you tonight that it's not true. Next thing I'd like to make, I'm just going to make a few comments. I have had nothing but excellent, and I repeat, excellent, working relationships with code enforcement. Never, ever have I had a problem. In fact, I've actually had letters put in personnel files because of the excellent work. The next comment I'd like to make is, I told the gentleman that was here from La Cuenyata Flitridge that I think I would believe more in the redevelopment agency when I see some low-income housing in La Cuenyata Flitridge, because La Cuenyata Flitridge has none, and they continue on that path. Lastly, I think a lot of people here are aware that there's, the emails are flying around, whatever they call that stuff. It is my observation that there's good in the Vanguard and there's bad in the Vanguard. I personally have had been viciously attacked by Vanguard. I think a lot of you know that. But on the other hand, they have done some good works on looking for misplaced monies and things that they feel under funds in the city. Also, the city has done good things, and the city has done bad things. Now, the one thing that always sticks in my craw is that the Rossmooin Mountain Homeowners' Association had to fight, I mean, fight, for 10 years for traffic coming. That was a bad thing. So there's good and bad on both sides, the pointing of fingers. I'd like to make one last quote from Franklin Delano Roosevelt, "A pox on both your houses." Thank you.
Next speaker is Willie Bartivat, followed by Bill Wiseman.
Mayor Protem Najarian, members of the city council and staff, good evening. My name is Willie Bartivat, a 20-year resident in the city of Glendale, and I have known Edith Fuentes. For your information, so many people, especially from the Filipino community, were appalled, dismayed, and shocked by the decision of the city of Glendale in the unfair demotion of Edith Fuentes. I am here for the second time to convey to the city council and the civil service commission of our, not only Filipinos, of our unconditional support for the reinstatement of Edith Fuentes to her position as planning zoning administrator in the city of Glendale. We therefore urge and appeal to the city council and the civil service commission to please review and reinstate Edith Fuentes as planning zoning administrator in this city of Glendale. I have solicited some support from some of the friends, I'm sorry, some of the friends of Edith Fuentes. Again, members of the council, I certainly request in behalf of the Filipino community to please reconsider that decision that was made, because we really feel it was unfair. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill Wiseman, followed by Sharon Wiseman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem, council members, city staff, and the public. My name is Bill Wiseman from far north Glendale. And I think I would like to start tonight by mentioning a very old saying, which is, if you lie down with dogs, you may get up with fleas. And if some people in this room have ended up with a few fleas on it, blaming the messenger is not exactly the most responsible way to deal with that. I also wanted to say, since I spoke here last week, I have been very, very gratified at the many expressions of support I have received from emails, phone calls, people coming up to me in public, people I don't even know, who want to shake my hand and thank me for bringing forth the information about Barry Allen to the city of Glendale. And I'm disappointed Mr. Allen is not here tonight. I was really hoping to hear about his career as an undercover agent for the DIA. And folks, if you believe that, I would like to sell you the Brooklyn Bridge. I realize that Mr. Allen's 1985 conviction and jail time for counterfeiting were quite a long ways in the past, and I understand that some people feel that perhaps he's rehabilitated himself and turned over a new leaf. Well, I'm here tonight to discuss several things that are much more recent than 1985. And some of you, I'm sure, will recall from having read Mr. Allen's various resumes and biographies that he's published in different places, that he has claimed multiple times that he was the deputy director of civil defense in Southfield, Michigan for many years. Now, I have to thank Mr. Allen for making me more aware of the sunshine laws in this country. And it turns out that the state of Michigan has a very comprehensive Freedom of Information Act. And so I submitted a Freedom of Information Act request to the city of Southfield, Michigan, requesting any documents dated between 1957, when Mr. Allen graduated Southfield High, and 1985, when Mr. Allen was arrested, convicted, and sent to prison, showing in what capacity, if any, Alan Silverman was associated with, an employee of, or a volunteer for, the city of Southfield, Michigan. And my request was denied based on the fact that no such records exist. So here's a fact for you, folks. It's not an allegation. It is a fact confirmed by the Freedom of Information Act officer of the city of Southfield, Michigan. Barry Allen lied when he said he was deputy director of civil defense in Southfield, Michigan. And this is something recent, not something that happened many years in the past. Here's another example. There is a website called LinkedIn, which is sort of a Facebook for professionals. I've been a member of it for many years. I imagine probably some people in this room are also members. Barry Allen has several pages on LinkedIn. And on one of those pages, he says that he has a Juris Doctor degree that was granted in the year 1964 by Wayne State University in Michigan. Well, I wrote to the registrar of the Wayne State University Law School, and, big surprise, there is no record of any individual named Alan Silverman or Silverman. I even asked them to check the spelling variations because of Barry's known use of many aliases. And the same answer, folks, no, he did not, there's no record that he even attended the Wayne State University Law School, much less graduated with a Juris Doctor degree. And the last thing I'm going to say is, to hear Mr. Mohill come up here and drone on about John Draymond is frankly quite astounding. The Vanguardian's core group of Barry Allen, Mike Mohill, and Richard Espiritu have seven criminal convictions between them that we know of, seven criminal convictions. John Draymond has never been arrested. He's never been charged with a crime. And to hear Mr. Mohill come in here and drag his good name through the mud is the rankest, most stinking form of hypocrisy I have ever seen, and I found it quite disgusting. And that's all I have to say on this subject. I believe I've done enough to get the snowball rolling downhill on this issue. I think events are going to take care of themselves. I don't really have any plans to come up and belabor this point any further, but I did want to let you know what I have found out regarding the false claims that Barry has made of being deputy director of civil defense and having graduated law school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wiseman.
Mayor Protem Najarian, council members and staff, I'm Sharon Wiseman from far north Glendale, and I'm speaking here as an individual this evening. Regarding the Glendale News Press's article about the Barry Allen affair, where they seem to feel the big story is Councilmember Najarian's request to see how to avoid city staff being asked to appear at Vanguardian's meetings on work time and feeling compelled to go. This has nothing to do with the First Amendment, in my opinion. It's about misuse of taxpayers' time and money to support Mr. Allen's private agenda. If the Glendale News Press is interested in supporting the First Amendment, perhaps they might look into the new regulations for nonprofits to have a booth at the Montrose Harvest Market. I enjoyed it when several candidates for local office were there at the same time. Now it appears only one community group or nonprofit will be allowed each week at the Montrose Harvest Market. How will a choice be made? Would it be the Historical Society of Crestina Valley, Foothills Relay for Life? Would it be the La Cuenyata Republican Women's Club, Glendale Democrats? I don't know the legality of this new policy, but I do think the streets they close where this market exists are public and supported with my tax money. And I support the open dialogue that used to be with the Harvest Market when it was under earlier management and organization, where all community groups from all viewpoints were, you know, welcomed to be there amongst the fruit and vegetable vendors and the flower vendors and the so-called thieves' market. So I hope perhaps someone with some resources to look into the situation will follow up on that. I noticed online, checking the Glendale News Press, that there's going to be a report tomorrow that the city is enforcing the artificial turf law. And I want to thank you very much for enforcing that so that plastic grasses, you know, that was illegally put in front yards is now being removed. And to help those who were hoping that their illegal installations would be allowed, I hope we can help them perhaps by contacting organizations like the Theodore Payne Nursery that has drought-tolerant plants and seeds, and Tree People that often gives away drought-tolerant appropriate trees. And perhaps we can interest some community organizations in Glendale, such as Glendale Beautiful, or the Coalition for a Green Glendale, or the Committee for a Clean and Beautiful Glendale, to work with the homeowners that are losing their plastic grass to economically replace it with something much more beautiful and much more conducive to saving water and ending pollution. And one additional reason that Bill and I were exposing what we and others have found out about Barry Allen and his proteges are what he broadcasts live, live streaming over the internet, and I'm sorry to bring this up, but about his efforts to become involved with Councilmember Najarian's divorce and make it more difficult. My son was nine years old when his father, my first husband, and I divorced, and I know how extremely difficult that situation is on families, even when the parents are, actually, we used one attorney, and we rode up our property settlement ourselves. And even that, it was extremely difficult. And to hear repeatedly Barry Allen talking about how he would make this more difficult, just, I couldn't get, frankly, your boys out of my mind, and I don't think it's appropriate for him to do that, and I wanted to do everything I could to stop that kind of behavior, and to call attention to those people who have been enabling Mr. Allen and his minions over the last years by giving them credibility, by supporting them. Lastly, if some news organization wants to check on another 501(c)(3) that I think may be misusing their media publication, check out a man named David Demall, who produces the Foothills paper over in Sunland Tahanga. And thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. I have no other cards. Are there any council comments?
Yes. Two issues. First, the issue of Edith Fuentes that was brought up. I would, and I know that this is a civil service matter, however, I do understand that she was reassigned from zoning hearing officer to a planning administrator. Is that correct? And I would like to know what the circumstances are and why was she assigned, because I remember her hearing all these cases over many years, so if there are documentation as to why, and if it's available to the council, I'd like to have it.
Councilmember Menucha and members of the council, there actually was two issues. One is the transition from the zoning administrative system to the planning hearing officer system. That was all part of the public process that the council ultimately approved. All that information can be provided to the council.
Yes, that's not the issue I'm asking.
And with respect to the issues raised by the speakers, what you're asking about, that is a personnel matter.
No, it's not the issue that was raised with the speaker, actually. The speaker did bring up the issue of Edith Fuentes, but I'm talking about, why was she not, why was she taken away from being a zoning hearing officer, and why was she put as planning administrator as opposed to a zoning officer? That is the question I'm asking for her. So if you don't, no one has to answer it if I can get a report on that.
To the extent we can provide any information, we'll provide you information.
Okay. The second issue is the issue Mr. Masiti brought up. And as we were going through the interviews for the city manager, I made it clear that discrimination issues are foremost for me as it relates to any ethnicities. And I do believe that staff has to treat everyone the same, whether code enforcement or anyone else. I do take the issues brought up by Mr. Masiti seriously, and I would like staff to take them seriously as well and to look into them. And I understand there was an email. I do have a copy of that email. I guess he didn't get an answer, and I understand the questions on there. But I think it's important for the city council and the city as a policy to deal with any discrimination issues and to investigate them to the full extent possible. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Any other comments? I'd just like to make a few comments with regard to Mr. Zavos and his, I guess, his claim that Barry Allen has paid his debt to society. He didn't use those words exactly, but the reference was that it was a decades-old conviction that should be in some manner forgiven today. The fact is that Mr. Allen has not paid his debt to society. His debt to society is intended by the laws of the United States of America and the state of California to be paid each and every day. Mr. Allen cannot own a firearm, one of the principal rights extended to citizens of the United States in our Bill of Rights. He cannot sit, and here's the irony, he cannot sit in a jury, either a petty jury or a grand jury, and under controlled circumstances with a judge limiting evidence in a controlled environment. He cannot sit. He's not allowed to sit in judgment of others, either civilly or criminally. That's a punishment that's intended to follow that person, not forever, until the President of the United States gives him a pardon. And my discussions with the Office of the Pardon Attorney from the Department of Justice indicate Mr. Allen was not extended a pardon. Even President Clinton, in his last few days, where he went a little overzealous in his extension of pardons, did not see fit to pardon Mr. Allen. So let's not say he's paid his debt to society. But what we should say is, the problem with Mr. Allen and those that work with him and write with him in his article is not their policy criticisms. That's fine. I welcome policy criticism. But it's the obscenities that Mr. Milano writes. It's the personal attacks, it's the involvement in my personal affairs, that you, Mr. Zavos, should be the very first one to come up and denounce. It's easy to attack the Wisemans, but I shall wait for you to denounce the personal attacks by Mr. Allen to members of this council and members of this community. So if we're going to, if we're going to be indignant about what's happening to Mr. Allen, let's be clear. Policy, Mr. Zavos, please. I have the floor now. We gave you—
All three representing what I said.
Mr. Zavos, please, keep it down. You're an attorney.
You're an attorney. You know the rules here. It's not the policy arguments, it's the personal vicious attacks, and if we as a community can't stand up and say, "These personal attacks are out of line," then what can we stand for? Argue pensions? Argue a bloated government? Argue the water rates? That's fine. We can all live with that and discuss that on an intelligent level, but when we get personal, that's where it crosses the line. And no one has stood up to Mr. Allen to this point, and he's run roughshod over this community. Well, I'm standing up at this point, and he's got to stop it. And I extended the message to Mr. Allen that he must stop these personal attacks weeks ago. He laughed. I think it's in the videos. I think it's in the videos that Weisman has posted. Ha ha, that fool Najarian thinks we've got a video going of him. Ha ha ha. Well, he's really off his rocker. He's really upset now. Well, that's where we should all come together as a community and draw the line on personal attacks against me, on personal attacks against staff, personal attacks against any other member, resident or visitor. Let's discuss policy. Let's deal with this, deal with the serious issues facing this city on a mature basis.
May I make a motion to adjourn?
Well, I was going to wait until I reviewed the tapes, but let me just say briefly that what I've always sensed from this guy and his cohorts, but for him specifically, is that this is really a commercial enterprise that he's running. I once used the term "the faint sniff of a con man," and my feeling is, in all of the years that he, and he appeared on the scene literally out of nowhere, along with his girlfriend, I've always sensed he had no visible means of support. He wasn't old enough, he wasn't retired, he didn't have any social security checks coming in. This, I've always felt, was an enterprise, a financial enterprise. I asked him numerous times for a simple documentation, the checks going into the nonprofit and the checks he wrote from that nonprofit. Very simple, not a balance sheet, not anything other than who gave you money, and who did you pay, and what did you pay yourself? He never provided that information, not once. I asked it numerous times. It came to a head when he was taking money for the Thompsons, and we all know that story. So while I am surprised in terms of the criminal conviction for counterfeiting, I'm not surprised at the person and what he's capable of doing. He's done it numerous times for years and years, printing outright lies, just basically doing what he wants. Obviously, he's protected by the First Amendment. Then there are people associated with him, and I think that's the best way to describe it, who have been part and parcel of the enterprise. I don't believe they've received any money, that I'm very confident that they haven't received any money, but they're part and parcel of the enterprise. They do his beckoning. Look at Mr. Mohill today and what he had to say. Guilt by association, he said. "We were all guilty for John Draymond and whatever he did in his condo and other activities." So we've been subjected to this for many, many years. In the past, this is something that obviously goes on in all municipalities, but in the past, without the internet, it's done at the podium, et cetera, but because of the internet, it gets disseminated and disseminated, and so, well, the reality is that this guy is not going to go away, neither are his minions. They're not going to go away either, and I generally don't respond to any of them because I just take it all with a grain of salt. The average person out in the world has no interest in what they have to say. They basically have, you know, very little following, and so we are where we are. But the personal attacks, I think that's just outrageous, you know, but it shows a character of the person, and it's not just Barry Allen, it's other people associated with Barry Allen who have those intentions, and I don't mean Mr. Zavos. I think he's kind of the exception, but I can't say that about the others.
Any other comments?
Adjourn in memory of Mary Chauvin.
We are adjourned in memory of Mary, Mary Chauvin.
Marilyn, yeah.
Marilyn Chauvin.